Greetings, obstinate individuals. Welcome back to Disenthral. I will be Patrick Smith. We have an interesting show today. Let's get into it. He has a plan, she has a plan, and you get to pay for it regardless.
The best way to get someone motivated is to stand for something strongly, deeply, passionately.
Subscribe to Disenthral.
Do as you're told.
Somebody was butthurt because I was challenging their deeply held beliefs that they were wrong on. And they were like, that's why Larkin won't talk to you and you don't get interviews with him. Oh, man. Anyway, welcome to the show, James. How are you?
I'm doing awesome. How are you, man?
Oh, man. Life, life is crazy. I am doing this without AC for the record. So if you, if you guys see me start sweating, that's why. Uh, it's, it's a hundred degrees in Texas and not a good day to be without AC. So it's hard to find. Huh?
Go ahead. Sorry.
I was just gonna say it's hard to find a good AC person that, uh, knows what cash price means with cryptocurrency. Those are two kind of, you know, terms that are important. Cash price and cryptocurrency. You know what those mean?
I have no idea.
So if y'all know anybody, let me know. Uh, what is up everybody? NCAP, good to see you. Outlaw Taco. I gave tacos some shit in the comments earlier. All right, cool. So you have been up to some interesting stuff in a town not too far away from where you live, right? Um, and I started to, I was watching some of the videos and seeing some of the insanity. And, and then I hear an update from you and I think you put out a video on it recently. And I was like, dude, we gotta talk about this. This is a, this is a big deal. So tell us about it. What, what's going on?
Uh, it is a little too close to me than I want it to be. I kind of moved out to the middle of nowhere. By the way, I do have AC, but I don't need it because it's currently 69 degrees up here in the mountains, Patrick. You're welcome.
All right, all right, all right. That's fair. That's fair. But you know, you know, when the winter time, when I tell you it's like a nice 65 degree day, you know?
Yep. And I shoot you pictures of a foot of snow.
Oh, hell no. Yeah. I'd much rather be sweating.
Um, well, yeah, people started sending me stuff from this place called Mountaineer, New Mexico, probably close to a year ago. I was getting emails. Um, I put my email address out there. I tell people, hey, you want to see your video featured on the channel? Shoot me an email. Most of the time people shoot me stories and look, man, the truth is, um, I want my videos to be able to reach people who don't believe that there's anything wrong and show them beyond a reasonable doubt. So, um, I was getting emails from people in Mountaineer saying, hey, our cops are so corrupt. And I'm like, look, I don't think you're lying, but I think I need proof.
Yeah.
And then they sent me the first video and then they sent me the second video and then more and more stuff started coming in. And at the time, these people didn't know that I live right up the road from them. And, um, but I, I shared one of them. I shared another. And then I actually went out there and met up with them. I was like, hey, guys, I'm, I'm right up the road, you know? You want to burn this motherfucker down? No, I'm just kidding. Figuratively.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Um, but, uh, the more that we exposed what was going on in Mountaineer with their tiny little police department, if they were fully staffed, they'd have five cops. And the more that I exposed about them, the more that the chief Juan Reyes and the mayor Peter Nieto dug their heels in on, we're not doing anything wrong. Um, and one of their cops is on paid administrative leave right now. And he's been the, he's been on leave since November of 2021. And of course I was like, well, it looks like at least they're getting rid of some of the dirty pigs, right? So I thought that was good.
Yep.
And then I find out why he's on leave is because he's a snitch. He had gotten caught downloading videos that allegedly showed misconduct, rights violations, and even possible violations of law and sent them to the attorney general in New Mexico. And very shortly after that, uh, the chief went through and, and started looking at the security cam footage in the police department and found him downloading videos and said, oh, he didn't have permission to do that. Well, the truth is he didn't have to have permission. He had access. So there's actually no rule, no law saying he couldn't do what he was doing. But they retaliated against him, put him on leave, sent a complaint to the LEA board to try to take away his certification and his career. Because this is what we do when you cross the effing blue line. We terrorize you. We destroy your career. Uh, you remember Christopher Dorner, right? Isn't, didn't the same thing happen to him?
Yeah, there's so much here to dissect and to point at about everything we always talk about. There's so much here. I'm really looking forward to it. This is a, uh, an evidence use case for all of the arguments about the problem with monopolized security forces uh, paid for by compulsory taxation. Um, but first I want to just start by saying, I want everybody out there who knows James Freeman and the work that he does. I want you just to imagine you're like a small town, um, cop, chief of police, or you're like a small tiny town mayor. And you're just out there living life, doing your little tiny town mayor things. And then one day, James freaking Freeman moves into your town. Imagine having James living in your, in your town. Oh my goodness. So I, I, I bet we're going to get a lot of entertainment out of this uh, over the coming weeks. But another, one of the questions I did have for you though, was like, and I, and I think I had a private conversation with NCAP cop watch who's in the comments about this. I was like, hey, are you, uh, ever concerned with sort of shitting where you sleep or pissing off the local tyrants that, you know, you would have to deal with every day? And like, what, what's that like for you?
Yes, absolutely. And, and it's awesome that you brought that up because a lot of people who do similar stuff to what I do say they won't do it in their own community. I started doing it in my own community because I don't believe in voting, obviously, but even if I did, even if I was into that kind of stuff, I would vote locally. I would make changes locally. I wouldn't try to change the president, you know, the presidential puppet. I would try to change my own neighborhood. I, I think that, uh, our activism first should start with ourselves, then our family, our community, and, and expand out from there. Um, so yeah, there's, there's some danger in it for sure. We're dealing with real thugs.
Um, yeah.
And it is, it is dangerous, but it's necessary. And this is really the same problem that a lot of people in the community have. They're actually scared to death. We have far more support in this community than I have ever seen anywhere before when I did this, which is why I do continue to do it. Because there are so many there who, they will not show their faces though. I'm telling you, these people who are, have accused the chief of, of sexually groping them um, to a, a private investigator, won't put it on the record because they're scared to death. Um, and that's, that's in some of the reports and the emails. And, and this is all alleged too. I don't have any firsthand knowledge that he did that. But I do have documents showing back and forth, you know, uh, this woman said that he did this, but she doesn't want anyone to know who she is. And, um, so for a lot of people, yes, the fear is genuine. It is real. And it, it kind of sucks, man.
Yeah, yeah, for real. Okay. Well.
There are, even with that fear too, I'll point out though, that there's a handful of people in the town that are just done and they're standing up and they're still scared. They know the reality of what's going on and what could happen to them, but.
Well, once you get, once you get like critical mass, then it becomes way more safe to, to stick your head up, so to speak.
Um, and that's what some of the people who have started sticking their heads up have started to tell the other people in the community. Like, you know, you remember the movie ants, when the one ant stands up to the grasshopper, you know, it's just one little ant. Yes, but if, but they outnumber us a hundred to one. And if all of them start standing up, then our way of life is over.
Yep. Adam on Facebook says, I hear that's what the second amendment is for allegedly. Allegedly is right, man.
I'm not familiar with that. What's the second amendment?
Uh, it's some, it's a magic spell that keeps a lot of Republicans appeased and feeling protected.
Yeah, I am familiar with that.
See, as long as you can make them think that they have the means to defend their rights, if the government turns bad, then they won't ever actually like use them apparently.
Genius, genius play too.
Okay, just pissed off half the audience. Uh, the other.
I, I've shared this on my main channel, by the way, this stream. So I don't know how many people are in there, but, uh, you're gonna get some status. You're gonna get some status.
Welcome, welcome. Thanks for the five. Shout out to James Freeman. Afro Man says, the people equals unity makes strength. We the people equals unity makes strength. I think, well, I think we the individuals together is where the strength actually is. Cool. Well, we got some people over in Odyssey too. That's good. So if this turns sideways, I don't think it will. I think it'll be safe for YouTube on this one. I'm actually surprised I was able to stream. My Anarchist channel is currently, uh, has a strike, so I can't stream or upload videos because I had a debate. I, I hosted a debate where I had like the, one of the world's most prominent anti-vaccine doctors, chiropractors on debating, um, just a random anti-vax guy or pro-vax guy. And it was just like a, a really good debate where they really went point, counterpoint. And apparently YouTube doesn't even want that. They just want no mention of anything anti-vax, even if you're debating it, like.
Just by saying that word, this stream is done now. It's getting taken down.
Oh, that's a good point. Yep. They're probably watching out for it. Losers, man.
Yeah. It's really, it really, really sucks. We, we get to a point where we start knowing what we can and can't talk about. And most time I just tell my audience or like, hey, what do you think about this? And I tell them the fact that I can't tell you what I think about it should tell you all you need to know about it.
Yeah, it should tell you all that you're watching on the wrong website. Like we're, we're doing all these streams over in Odyssey too. Do you stream to Odyssey or do you only stream YouTube?
I only stream to YouTube, but all of my content is automatically backed up to Odyssey. So anything I upload on any of my channels on YouTube are automatically, uh, uploaded to Odyssey.
There's something going, we have to address this because literally everybody's asking, there's something going on with Bao? He's missing or something? And everybody's asked, demanding where you're hiding him.
Has he, I, I heard that he was taking a break from streaming. Um, and that was what, that was the news that I put out because I didn't want people to know that he's dead in my basement. Um, speaking of getting streams taken down, uh, no, I don't, I don't know where he is. He's not dead in my basement this time. He was last time.
This, that moves over an Odyssey says, uh, as an individual, I'm not pissed. My magic spells in D and D are more effective than second amendment magic spells. Oh, man. All right, cool. All right. So we have a big story to tell. Uh, and I don't really even know where to begin. So I guess I'll just hand it to you. You wanna, and you can just kind of talk us through it. Tell me to play the video. Tell me what parts of the video to play. Tell me when to pause it, you know, whatever you want to do. I'm sure I'll have like a million questions. So you want to set us up for this day where we have video for, like what, what led up to it?
So, um, there was the part that I just talked about how there are so many corrupt cops within, in the police department. I recently found out there's one that's been on leave for, since last November. And I find out why he's on leave and he's actually on leave for snitching on the bad cops. Um, and so when it, when the chief found out that this snitch cop, we'll call him Christopher Dorner, although he's, hasn't killed anybody, he's just a snitch, uh, crossed the, the thin blue line. Um, when the chief found out that he was downloading and saving evidence against him and sending it to the attorney general, he took video of this cop doing this and took it before city council and said, hey, this is video of a cop um, downloading stuff he's not supposed to download and breaking into my office without permission, which, which was just an outright flagrant lie. He said specifically, and it's, and it's documented in writing, that this cop used a white paper notebook of some sort to pry open the locked door. This MacGyver motherfucker used a notebook.
Okay.
But you can't even make this stuff up. I mean, I guess Juan Reyes can, but it's in, it's documented in writing that this is his accusation before the town council, before the LEA board. So he goes before the town council and he wants this, this cop fired because it's not actually up to him. The council has to vote on it. And, uh, the council members are going, dude, we can't wait to see this. This guy pried open a door with a notebook. Like this is incredible, man. We gotta see what this guy is doing.
Okay.
Um, they show the video to council and the, two of the council members point out that they never saw that particular thing happen and ask the chief. So where's the part where he pried open the door? Cause it looked like he just walked up and turned the knob. And he said, oh, well, that part didn't record.
Didn't record. So the whole video shows it like from beginning to end, except for like a part where he MacGyvered a notebook and do it like levered open a door with paper.
That's correct. That particular part didn't record. There's no gaps in the recording, but that part, I don't know. Magic. I don't know.
So they fired him immediately, right? Like you, you cannot have a lying police chief, right? Like that would just completely undermine everyone's faith in the system.
Right. Absolutely. They fired him. No way. They didn't.
Oh, what?
So they voted though, there's, there's four council members and a mayor. Okay. And so they voted to fire this police officer for MacGyvering the door open with a notebook. But two of the council members who actually like to question things and look at things objectively, um, uh, they, they didn't see what the chief was saying. And so they said, well, we can't fire him because the claim that you made doesn't actually exist in the video. And so we don't see him doing anything wrong here. So they ended up basically hung, uh, a hung jury, I guess you could say. And, uh, so he wasn't terminated. He should have been brought back to work the next day. Um, because he wasn't terminated. The mayor said, well, after that though, the chief went and filed an LEA 90 complaint with the state board, state law enforcement board to try to have his badge stripped. All right.
Okay.
So, so, um, just a few.
Meanwhile, sorry to interrupt. Did the guy that got the evidence do anything with it? Like, did he send it anywhere and start any kind of, I don't know. Did he send it to the feds? What did he do? State level?
Uh, okay. So he sent it to the attorney general. He sent a huge packet to the county sheriff who I just talked to the other day and he did get the packet. I didn't ask him why he didn't do anything with it. Um, so that, yes, the things he was downloading were sent to law enforcement. It wasn't as if he just took it and went home and wasn't as if he was destroying things. He was literally preserving things because the town gets rid of everything after six months. And there were allegations that I cannot confirm yet that they may have been deleting things even before that six months. I don't know for sure though, you know, just allegations, but either way it doesn't hurt to preserve possible evidence.
Do we, do we have any idea what evidence or what crimes he got evidence for? Do we have any idea on any of that?
Yeah. So there's a couple of videos. Um, I don't know magically. I've seen some of them. Uh, that just got dropped a couple of weeks ago. There's one where the sergeant pulls over somebody and immediately escalates pulling his gun. He's supposed to, anytime you pull your gun, you're supposed to put that in the report, use of force report, even if you didn't fire it. He didn't do it. There's, there's nowhere in the report and it doesn't say anywhere that he pulled his gun.
Hold on. You can't tell me that a law, a law enforcement officer pulled his gun and didn't note it in the report like that.
Shocking, huh?
No, I mean, so that's not even true. I don't believe it.
Oh, that's not even the end of that story. That same stop, he then decides to try to have the guy, he tries to get him on a DWI. But none of the Mountaineer police officers are competent. Well, really nobody's competent at doing a DWI test. Most of the time you just fail those anyways, right? They had a sheriff deputy come out and do the test, said that he failed, I'm sorry, he passed two. But there were two that he couldn't take because of a back injury. Nobody ever passes those, but he passed two. Then the chief and, and the, uh, sergeant start conspiring and saying, it doesn't matter. Just charge him with everything. Just charge him with everything. The chief also had brought his wife out that day. She's not a cop, but she's all dressed up in uniform with a belt on. Um, I, I don't even know why she came out there, but, and she's the pre-trial release officer in the county. Man, the, the twists and turns on this are why it's been so difficult for me to cover this. There's so much, you know, there's so.
Was this the same town as you had like the, you had like the head of the cops and his wife was the one in charge of people? Uh, what on probation? Well, not probation. What is it?
Yes. Pre-trial release. Yep.
So it's like the cop that busts people and the person in charge of, of like, I don't know, minding them until they get to their court date are married? And this isn't a conflict of interest for anybody? Like, does, is there, is there anything that isn't dirty in this town? Like holy shit.
Right. And that was, I thought that was a, a conflict enough, but now when I seen this video a couple of weeks ago, not only that is, is her husband arresting people and she gets to supervise them on pre-trial, trial release, she's out there as they, they made her a reserve officer, I guess, dressed up like a cop. So she can actually, I, I think she can arrest people too. Um, so now the conflict's even deeper. She's a cop who gets to arrest people and uh, also babysit them on pre-trial release before they're convicted. And I don't know the details of what she can and can't do as a reserve officer, this fake officer, but, uh, I mean, it just keeps getting deeper and deeper, you know? And, um, so, but, but back to where they get rid of this cop, they didn't vote to fire him at the council meeting, right?
Well, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Somebody in chat just said that the chief of police is also the chief financial officer of the city. Are there only like six people here? So they're all wearing 50 hats. Is that what's happening?
Kind of. Yeah. There's 850 people in the town and.
Okay.
Um, I, he's not the chief financial officer though, but the mayor is the business manager for the schools. And so he, that's really the biggest job out there. The best job you can get out there is working for the public school. Um, and he's over all those people. Um, but, but let me get back to the town hall meeting.
Okay. Yeah, sorry.
They decided not to terminate him. Well, they were kind of a hung jury, I guess. Uh, didn't, didn't fire him. He should have been brought back to work the next day. Later on down the road, just a couple of months ago in June, one of the council members finally said in the public meeting, hey, we voted to get rid of him. And the vote didn't pass. So why didn't he come back to work? And the mayor said, well, if you have a pending LEA 90 complaint against you, then you cannot be a cop in Mountaineer. And the chief had put this LEA complaint on him after they didn't get him fired. So we said, oh, okay. So all you had to do is file an LEA 90 complaint on a cop and he can no longer be a cop here. So it was only a matter of a couple of weeks later before the chief had three LEA 90 complaints on him and they're legitimate too.
And I'm sure that, and I'm sure the chief of police is instantly like on paid leave.
Absolutely. Yep. Yep. So, and they're legitimate complaints because the chief had been under investigation before for these sexual harassment allegations. And, and those investigations never went through, which is a whole nother story. I mean, there's a thousand stories to go off on here. Um, but the chief was never properly investigated. And so these people who heard the mayor say that were like, oh, there's another avenue to have him investigated. Because up to this point, the mayor's blocked everything. So they filed these LEA 90 complaints. Then one of the council members emailed the, uh, town clerk and the mayor and said, hey, the chief now has LEA 90 complaints on him. We need to put it on the agenda to put him on leave as well, because you said, that's the rules. Uh, the mayor absolutely ignored him. He used to just tell him, no, we're not going to put things on the agenda. Now he just absolutely ignored him.
Just in the, in the council meeting, like he, somebody's saying something to put on the agenda and he's just ignoring it.
Well, these things are supposed to be put on the agenda beforehand because according to the statist open meetings act, I think it has to be like 72 hours before a meeting. It has to be publicly posted that the meeting's going to happen and what's going to be addressed in the meeting. And so a week before the meeting, he sent what he wanted on the agenda to the mayor, which is the way that they're supposed to do it. The mayor always refuses to put his stuff on there though. And this time he didn't even send the email saying no, he just ignored it. Um, and so we got to the council meeting and, um, we brought some noisy people.
How, are there other ways? Are there, are there other ways to get things on the agenda or literally the only thing that happened in council meetings is what the mayor wants to happen?
In this particular case, it's only what the mayor wants to happen. He keeps saying.
If I was a tyrant, I'd be mayor. That's exactly how I would do it.
Right. He keeps saying, if there's only four council members and he keeps saying, well, if you could get three of the council members to say they wanted something on the agenda, then I would have to put it on there. But until you get three council members to do that, then I don't have to put anything you want on the agenda. And that's what he's saying the rules are. And I haven't, we haven't been able to find that written rule anywhere anyways, but this is, this is the joy of statism, right? I mean, once you write it on paper, it is so, you know? Uh, you get to own black people, you know, you get to be a dictator in a small town called Mountaineer, whatever it is, write it on paper and now it's magically so.
Yep. Taco man. He says, there's only 16 people in the town, but eight of them are your kids, James. Oh, man. Oh, um, somebody, uh, let's see, breaking news now asks if I was at candles in the dark in Texas a couple of years ago. Uh, we, uh, myself and my producer, Kason, um, helped put on that candles in the dark in, uh, was it, it was kind of like Fort Worth. It was like Hurst Bedford area. So yeah, I was there. You got it. All right. Sorry. Please continue. Um. Then what happened?
So, so the only, they, they wanted to do everything legal, but Peter just, the, the mayor, Peter, he just doesn't obey the rules anyways. And we already know he's not going to obey the rules. Um, but, uh, the council members decided that they figured out a way where they might be able to get things on the agenda. Before the meeting can even begin, they call the order, they pray to the flag and then they vote on whether or not to approve the agenda.
If you don't pray to the flag, James, you said that condescendingly. If you don't pray to the flag, the freedom doesn't drip out like.
Which is why they pray to it.
Yeah.
Um, maybe that's, maybe that's why things didn't work out the way we thought, because I didn't actually pray to it. Um, see, I think they're getting.
It's all your fault. It's all your fault.
I always, right. I always go outside because you know how people are about this. It's like a religion to them. And so I don't want to be offensive to people, but you know, I'm not going to pray to it. And this guy right there is getting up because he, they caught him off guard with the flag praying. And he was like, oh shit, they're praying to the flag and tries to inconspicuously walk away.
You offended, you offended the flag. It didn't freedom that day.
And, and a lot of people don't get this, especially since I, I put the, I posted this on my main page. A lot of people aren't going to comprehend that, but anyways. Um, then they're supposed to vote on the meeting agenda. Um, and so the only way that they, even though they can't put things on the agenda, they can vote not to approve the agenda. If the agenda is not approved, they can't continue with a meeting.
Okay.
Um, there's two council members, the two, there's the fat guy in the middle, uh, that, that a piece of shit in the blue shirt.
Okay.
There's, there's, there's the guy on the blue shirt, uh, that looks like a fucking turd on the chair right there. You see it?
I see the turd. Yep. Is that the mayor?
Like an elephant took a dump. Yeah, that's the mayor.
Okay.
Yeah, it looks like an elephant took a dump. And then there's two to the left of him. Well, it's his right, our left.
Our left. Okay. Two on the left, our left.
Yeah, our left. Uh, there's an old lady, Gail Jones, and there's a, there's a younger guy, Dustin Kaiser, and they swing from his nuts. And, and they really just don't think. And so they're like, Peter, what should we think? And he's like, here's what you think. And they're like, okay, Peter. And then there's the two to the right that actually question things and want to see things for themselves. When they're told something, they want an explanation. Um, so the two to the right, uh, the, the one on the far right.
Okay.
Um, asks for specific things to be put on the agenda. Um, I don't know if we'll be able to hear the audio, but maybe we can hear it.
Yeah, I can turn it up. I just have it muted. Is it your birthday?
Um.
Ryan super chatted a dollar and said, answer your damn phone jerk and happy birthday fucker. Is it your birthday?
You know, mine was July. It is Peter's birthday today though.
I don't know who Ryan's talking to, but thanks for the super chat. You wish somebody a birthday. All right, cool.
Peter's birthday is today.
Thank you, homies. For the five. He says, James. Hmm, I don't know. All right. So um, I'll, I'll just turn the volume on this and you can tell me if uh, I need to fast forward or whatever.
Uh, I think 4238, 42 minutes and 38 seconds is when the councilman starts asking to change things on the agenda. We'll see if you you guys let me know if you can actually hear it. If not, I'll just narrate it.
I can kind of tell that I can kind of tell that he's asking permission for something.
Okay, he's uh, he asked if we could do public comment at the beginning of the meeting instead of the end and do public comment before each and every agenda item. So that the council members and the mayor know what the people think about how they want them to vote rather than just voting and then asking the people what they think about their vote.
Yeah, I mean, why would the government want to hear about the people's opinions on stuff? I don't, I don't, that doesn't make any sense. This guy is weird.
Yep.
I couldn't hear what she said, but it was hard to hear when she was swinging by.
Um, so Peter says no. So if you pause right there, she actually agreed with Ernie. I don't know if she knew or Peter knew. I don't know if any of them realized, but she agreed with Journey, uh, with Ernie and said, um, public comment should not be an agenda item, but the public should simply be allowed to comment on each agenda item. So I don't know if anybody there even picked up or realized, because I was like, wait a second, you wait. You're so, because usually she just disagrees with Ernie and Richard just to disagree. And I think that was her goal. So I think it was her goal to basically say, we don't need to put it on the agenda. But still agreed that the people should be able to speak on items. Which Peter doesn't allow.
Um, Otto, thanks for the five. Appreciate you. Homies says collaboration with Netflix. Dude, if if they, I don't know if you've seen the HBO documentary called The Anarchists that's been airing recently.
I haven't.
But you could definitely sell a documentary on this mess, like 100%. If they can sell, if they can sell that, you can sell this.
Unfortunately, I was thinking this could be a TLC reality show too, but how embarrassing for there's a small handful of really shitty people that don't even necessarily live in Mountaineer. They live close by in this place called Deer Canyon. Just shitty fucking people. And they come in and stir shit up with Peter all the time. And truth is, it'd make a great reality show, like Keeping Up with the Kardashians or some shit like that.
We could totally produce it. And I bet, and I bet we could sell it. If if you want to produce it, I bet we could sell it.
But how embarrassing for the respectable members of the community, which really are most of them. There, there's a small handful of shitbags.
And and of course, you can always find the the small handful of shitbags in the government. That's just how it works. Government attracts it like flies to a pile of shit. Apparently the one in the blue shirt.
Yep. The only people who who apply for jobs to rule other people are shitty people.
Yeah. Yeah, necessarily. All right. So what do we do now? Do you want me to play again or fast forward or what?
Well, we can go ahead and play, see if we can hear uh, some of what he asks for, because he asked for a few things and Peter just repeated, says no.
Okay.
Did you hear all that?
No, it's like a, it's just one echoey mess. I don't know what's going on.
I I can only hear it because I do remember what was said. And so when he says it, 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 yeah. Um, so he asked for three things to be added to the agenda. Um, and they're, I mean, they're town business. It's, they're things that should just simply be added to the agenda. Um, one of them though, happened to be uh, talking about putting Chief Reyes on leave due to the fact that he's got the LEA 90 complaint against him. And he asked Peter, so I've asked you to put these items on in emails. Um, so can we put them on? And he knows Peter's going to say no. He already knows. He just wants him to do it in front of the people. Show the people what a piece of shit you are.
Good.
He already knows what all the answers are. Peter says, no, no, no. Now he's asking why.
Okay.
Um, and that's where we're at. So.
Okay.
All right, so. So Peter says that he's not going to add Ernie's items to the agenda because most of Ernie's items are quote bogus. And he talks about some stuff that's happened in the past. Um, and this is typical Peter. He doesn't even want to publicly speak about anything. Uh, he wants to control all the narratives. And so he doesn't even want to publicly talk about anything that that doesn't fit his particular narrative at the time.
Okay. All right. Inviting freedom. Thank you for the 10. I appreciate you. All right, I'm trying, I'm going to try a, an adaptive noise reducer. Let's see if that helps. I think the noise thing is actually helping. I can hear it a little bit. So you want to control everything without controlling everything. Why are you, why are you a piece of shit? I'm not a piece of shit. And somebody's in the audience like, you're a piece of shit. He's like, no talking from the audience. That's what happened. That's what I heard.
Yep, that's exactly what happened.
Okay, okay.
There is talking. There is actually talking. I can hear it.
It's almost like government without representation is like a thing that can happen or something. I don't know. Like, that doesn't sound like it's possible, though.
That guy right there. That guy right there with the white hair and the white beard was staring me down and I was staring him right back down. And so after we stared at each other for a while, I finally, yeah. After we stared at each other for a while, I finally turned my camera and pointed it at him, the guy in the front row with the white beard.
Well, did you, what? Okay.
All right. Now, dude, uh, this story is well documented too. Three or four years ago, they had problems with this. I don't remember how many years ago, but they had problems with this police department before. And completely cleaned house and and brought in new pieces of shit. And at those meetings, the mainstream media was there. And there's video of that particular guy being dragged out of a public meeting because of his public protest at the meeting by the police.
Okay.
But but you'll see later, he's okay with publicly, I mean, the police shouldn't have dragged him out. Um, but now later in the meeting, he asks the police to do the same to us and he gets spanked.
So how do you know that the old dude with the white beard wasn't like flirting with you a little bit? Like, maybe he's just interested.
I, he probably was. He could have been. He was looking at my eyes though, not my wiener.
Hmm.
So. And and why? Sure, that's it. It's kind of like a smart way of speech.
Contact the municipality.
What's this?
Contact the municipality and let me know what they say.
Contact who?
The municipality.
The municipal?
Yes, and let me know what they say. Or you can contact the attorney general. You made that right before.
That, no. So he's, he's telling Ernie to contact the municipal league because he feels like he's got buddies and pull in the municipal league. And all that they do is they keep track of all the rules and regulations that these towns and municipalities are supposed to follow. Because you have a constant influx and revolving door of new members and old members. And you know, this is one of the lowest levels of government. So you do get average Joes quite often sitting on council or as a mayor. And so the municipal league helps them understand what the magic spells are. Um, he feels like he's got special friends on the municipal league and so he doesn't have to obey any of the rules. And so he's telling Ernie, you got a problem with it? Go to, go to the municipal league. Um, because the same way that Juan Reyes can't do anything wrong, uh, because Peter Nieto protects him. Peter can't do anything wrong because the municipal league protects him. But they're, you know, municipal league is a pretty low tier, um, you know? He thinks he's got buddies in high places. It's not that high. Uh, New Mexico anyways.
Okay.
As a whole, New Mexico's not a high place.
I I I'm changing my mind, man. I think the real show that we need to sell to HBO is this uh, unrequited love story that's happening kind of in the background over here between you and the old guy. Like, I think that's we might have, we might have something there.
He's actually in the background right now.
So so what's happening now? Correct me if I'm wrong, is the guy on the right is like, hey, why can't we have things added to the agenda? And the mayor is like, take it up with somebody else. I'm saying no or something like that. And then the people in the pulpit in the back are getting upset at it? Is that what's happening?
That's exactly what's happening. And um, for not putting things on the agenda, he was saying, well, everything you bring is bogus. And he brought up some specific examples. Um, but the way that Peter works is you can sit there and tell him the sky is blue and he'll fight with you about it. I mean, he'll just lie straight to your fucking face about something you're both sitting there watching. You could watch a video with Peter of a cop shooting somebody in the back and go, man, he just shot that guy in the back. And Peter will go, you're just lying. You, you know, you didn't bring any evidence to the table, you know, just sit there and fucking gaslight the shit out of you. Um, and that's what Peter does. And that's his only defense mechanism against all of the truth and evidence and everything that's going on is to sit there and say, no, it's not. No, it's not.
Okay, all right. How do you, how do you join, how do you become a council member? Like, what's the process for that? Voting?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, they're all elected, I think, except for that old fucking bitch Gail Jones on the far left. I think she's currently appointed. Um, you know.
Tell us how you really feel. Yeah.
Over time, I have, um, I've really grown to fucking despise some of these particular people. Um, you know?
Yeah.
Anyways.
That's fair. You have a lot of experience with them that we haven't had yet. Yeah. Is this the guy that you told, the the mayor, the blue pile of, um, what did you say? Uh?
Elephant, elephant shit.
Sequoia. Yes, elephant shit. Did you say he's an actual communist? Or was that somebody else?
It, he'll at least claim to be a socialist. Um, I don't know if he'll outright claim to be a communist or not, though. Um, I'd call him and ask, but he doesn't even take my calls anymore since I recorded an hour and a half of conversations with him and used his words against himself.
Hmm.
So.
It's such a pain in the ass when people do that.
Yeah.
You're an ungrateful citizen. I can't tell what's happening. Can you give us an update?
Yes. So one of the items that he had asked put on the agenda was that there were, I think, one, maybe two employees that are taking home vehicles, uh, town vehicles. Um, and the council and mayor voted and allowed them to take them home. But the municipal rules still say that you can't take home a vehicle unless you're a full-time employee and these are part-time employees. Or one of them is a reserve officer. He's not even part-time. He's a reserve. And so he's saying, look, I understand that we voted, but we, we voted on something we didn't even have the legal right to vote on. The rules say that we can't even vote on that. So what I'm saying is we made a mistake and we need to go back and fix it. And Peter is saying, no, 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 we don't fix mistakes. When we fuck up, we just dig our heels in deeper.
So that's one of the things he's not allowing on the agenda. Interesting.
Yes.
All right.
Yes.
So because he didn't put something on the agenda, we're getting an argument on the agenda.
Yep. So we're not even in the meeting yet. Not only that, but they are, they actually end up violating the uh, this magic spells by discussing some of the things right now that aren't on the agenda. They're essentially discussing it. Um, and both of them are actually violating the magical codes and statutes.
Yeah. Uh-oh, are we losing you? No, Starlink down. Come back. Somebody in the chat said this was gonna happen. Up, up. Starlink's coming back. Here it comes. There it is.
Oh.
Welcome back. Yes, you're back. You're on Starlink.
Text you. Starlink, I was going to text you, say horseshit. I'll be back as soon as I can.
Yeah, no, no problem, no problem. All right, here we go.
You didn't put it on the agenda the way you were told to.
Woo, you're speaking out of turn, sir. You should be put in a cage.
Right. So what they're talking about now too is that uh, Ernie previously asked to put on the agenda to vote to terminate the chief. And instead, uh, the mayor put it on the agenda to talk about the chief in executive session. Nothing specific, just talk about him. And then they went back there and Ernie showed him all the things that the chief has done. Actual evidence, because you guys have seen it too. I mean, the whole world has seen some of the evidence at least against the chief. So for Peter to sit there and say, you didn't bring any evidence is absolute 100% fucking bullshit and.
For for my audience that hasn't seen it, like, can you give us like two short? For, for my audience that hasn't seen it, like, can you give us like two short summaries of something that he did? Like, some of the evidence?
Um, so on the, on his job application, you're supposed to put if you've ever been convicted of a misdemeanor or a felony. Um, the other officer there who had been convicted of a misdemeanor that got deferred adjudication. Put it on the application that he was convicted, but he got a deferred adjudication. So it was later thrown out. Juan Reyes did not put it on his application that he was convicted of, of, uh, battery, uh, false imprisonment and pulling a knife on his pregnant wife. But that he got deferred adjudication. And so the felony isn't technically on his record. He failed to put, so when, on his, on his job application, he just put no.
The, the chief of police was found guilty of pulling a knife on his pregnant wife? Is that what I just heard? Is that?
But, but no contest, as a matter of fact, which is a guilty plea.
Interesting.
Now, the way that deferred adjudication works is after you serve your time on probation, it's essentially thrown out so that you can, you don't end up with a felony on your records. You can still keep your firearms and whatever and be a cop.
Okay.
Um, but.
Interesting.
And that was just one of them.
I mean, I'm glad, I mean, that's a definitely a hero. Uh, in that chief of police position there. That's good.
He's using two different names. Um, he's got Juan, his criminal record has a different last name than the name, last name that he used on his job application. Um, and he's like, well, I passed background checks. We're like, yes, because you used a different name to apply for the job than you got convicted under. So. Goes pretty deep, Patrick. Goes pretty deep.
It, it doesn't sound like there's a bottom. It just sounds like this is like the perfect example of a corrupt government in a little tiny town.
I will tell you some stuff off camera, by the way, later for, but just a teaser for the audience. I'm not going to say it publicly because we don't have nearly enough evidence yet for me to even speculate about it. Okay, but we do. I'll tell you after. It goes about some of the, uh, how far it goes that we haven't even talked about yet, Patrick. And the audience, just be looking forward to it. There may be some people going to prison, buddy.
Oh shit.
Nice counsel to put it on the agenda on executive session to discuss the chief. How we went back there, you had no. I disagree. I know you disagree, but you really have no, you don't bring it so we can, we brought him now and now listening.
Why is the fat piece of shit the only one with a phone in front of him? Is that like a status symbol? He's like, I have the phone. This is the mayor, this is the mayor's phone. If I need, if y'all piss me off, I will make the call and push the red button. I am the mayor.
I think they've got, uh, people on a Zoom call as well that have called in.
Oh, okay. That makes sense.
But, but still, it should be in front of the clerk who's working the, the soundboard and all that stuff.
Yeah. Wait, are they mic'd up? They are.
Yes, they are. Yeah.
Next, next time you, next time you go, take a little audio recorder and jack into the soundboard so you get a good audio on all these people.
Yeah, I told you before we started the show too, they have a recorder and one of the things I was going to do was edit their audio onto my video, but I was doing so much other stuff. I never got to it. And their audio is honestly only slightly better. Those mics are shit.
Yeah, okay.
Because we're talking about something else. But you don't hear all of them really. Talk to the municipal league, talk to the attorney general, get their opinion, bring me their opinion, we'll go with it. Cause we, I mean, chats asked the audience, what do you want? Just one of them. Uh, they can speak at, at COVID time.
So he said, talk to the attorney general.
About what? Like letting, letting people talk or getting things on the agenda or, okay.
Yep. That's right. But remember Shoemate, Officer Shoemate, the snitch in the very beginning, the first person that he sent this information to was the attorney general. Um, I can't remember the guy's name. But it was immediately after that, that the chief started going after that cop. Um, the attorney general is also on the LEA board, I believe. So these people know each other, obviously. This is called government. Um, but when Peter says, go talk to this person or that person, that tells me that he's got a tie there. Um, which would explain why right after Mike Shoemate snitched to the AG, he ended up being retaliated against. That's one of those things I have absolutely no proof, no evidence of whether or not the AG snitched himself or someone in his office or, or what.
Well, something made the chief go and look at the surveillance video to find out what happened. I mean, obviously somebody told him.
We were told by the town clerk, Dennis Fulfer, because one of the people that requests footage said, oh, I didn't even realize that you had security cameras in the police department until I saw it on the news. So I want to request this, 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 and this. And they said, oh, well, the recordings only go back about seven to 14 days. We don't actually preserve those and the hard drive, you know, we only save what the hard drive has. And so she, we all started going, wait a second. Then how did they get this footage? How did they know to go and get this footage of Shoemate before it overrode? Like, I mean, this is some shady shit.
Yeah.
So you found the things that you wanted, but not what we wanted.
You know, what would have solved this whole thing? What, what was it called? The last time we did a show, we were, you were making fun of somebody that hasn't, that was trying to sell an idea, a pro, like a 360 cam for a cop or something?
Yeah, flagism, I think would solve this.
No way. It was the, didn't you say you're being, I, I don't want to say anything if you haven't announced it publicly. I'll text you. I don't even.
Okay. I think I might.
Yeah, I don't know if you've mentioned that publicly, so I didn't want to, I didn't want to say.
Uh, well, he's mentioned it publicly.
Oh, is it? So the guy that had the 360 cam for the cop thing is suing you, right?
He says he is, but honestly, he says he's suing everyone all the fucking time. He just met some guy. Anyways, that, that's, that's a whole other show, man. We can, we'll have a lot of fun with that.
I look forward to that day.
That's a ton of.
When I can recall what's, know what their responses are without, without telling everybody in the middle of the circle and form. That's why I asked. You know, you send it to Dennis, Dennis send it to all of us. All of us get it. Nobody respond. Asking for it to be on. Nobody says, I agree with Ernie. No one says, put it on. As, as far, as far as the public comments to my part, I'd say.
Deshaun says body cameras that live stream to a public website and are on 100% of the time should be on all cops, not that police should exist at all. Yes. And the mayor should have one too, and it should be in his butthole.
And I, I think we are here for the people.
Hey, Patrick.
Yes, sir.
I don't know if you know this about this particular mayor, um, but dead serious, he, he wouldn't protest that.
Moving on.
And see what they want. If they want to have it in the beginning, they want to have quite a lot. I, I reinforce you what the problem is. We should have it right here. I know that when we're running, we promise this, we promise that. And I think that's all we can do is at least try and be there for once. Well, in general, the reason public comment is at the end is so that the meeting occurs and then people comment on what happens at the meeting. If you want people to comment prior to, and then they have no say at the end, then that's fine. We too, like, we'll do that.
Or before each agenda item like he asked. Because the people shouldn't be able to speak about each and every item that happens in there.
James. They are behind the white desks. You are not behind the white desks. You're not supposed to talk. I know. Make it, I'm just trying to make sure you know the rules. That's all. They, they have white desks and a telephone, so.
Dude, dude, dude. So there's one meeting where the guy on the far right was gonna read a letter and he was, he was saying that he might stumble over it or something. And so just to be a troll and a smart ass, I was like, oh, hey, man, I'll read it for you. And I just walked up there and went to grab the letter. And, uh, I was like, yeah, man, I'll, I'll read it. And Peter goes, whoa, 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 he's not a council member.
White desk, white desk.
And I just acted all innocent like, oh, man, I'm, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I didn't, I was just trying to help out. I didn't know.
Next time, show up with your own white desk.
So that public can give their perspectives of what's on the upcoming concern. And then at least, you know, that may change perspective of individual council members and say, alright, well, I may have been wanting to mean this one, this one, but probably feels like whatever X is Y.
That's the reason the agenda is published ahead of time. So people can bring their concern to the municipal, mayor or to the council. Life's settling.
How often are these meetings?
Every two weeks.
That's like a constant source of entertainment for you. That's amazing. Okay.
You're not gonna keep controlling the narrative, Peter.
What'd you say?
Anybody who wants to come, the next one is on the 15th of August. He claims that he's gonna hold it over Zoom only so that we can't show up in person. So if you decide to come to the meeting on the 15th and he holds it on Zoom only, instead of going to a public meeting, we will be going to a protest on the public right away in front of his house. Cause we're sick and tired of his fucking shit and him constantly trying to run and hide instead of addressing the issues that need to be talked about.
I might need to come visit, especially if the weather's nice there. We'll see.
And I'm approving their stuff and not their stuff. It's exactly, no, what am I proving them? What, what are you wrong? What did you prove them on? I have, that's what I'm saying. I don't prove nothing of anyone. So for you to say. Well, I get the emails and I haven't seen any requests from them. You point out what's happening. Exactly. So that was just her thing. Mine, she just literally said that. She literally just said, I'm only lying to things of two council members, not everyone. The other council members are not.
If I was one of the council members and I was, every single time I started talking to Peter, I would say it like, I know you're a socialist, but, and then I would say whatever I was, I was gonna say, just like every single sentence, I know you're a socialist, but try and think about this.
Man.
I missed an email.
That's so.
What?
That's so publicly acceptable at this point though. People would be like, so, so what if he's a socialist? At, at least a good amount of people would, uh,
Hmm, disgusting.
Shame.
Disgusting.
Mayor, the supreme leader. The mayor or the supreme leader?
Should call him Fat Peter Mao, Chairman Mao, you know? Mayor Mao. Oh, he does not like being on camera.
The room is split here. Um, the people on the right side of the screen are tired of Peter and the people on the left side, I remembered us this week are, um, almost all of them are from Deer Canyon, not Mountain Air. And, um, they are socialists. Most of them are outwardly openly socialists, if not communist. Um, and so by the way, that, yeah, that's the split. We're split right down the middle of the room. Um, and a lot of the people who are with Peter come, come out and say, hey, you guys, you know, me specifically, you shouldn't be here. You don't even live in this town. Um, which is true. I do not live in the town limits. But his whole entourage is from out of town, whereas the people who are tired of Peter's shit actually live there. Um, and.
Sorry, I'm laughing at Toby's comment. He said Peter's ears perked up when he heard supreme. He thought it was food related. Sorry to interrupt. Go ahead.
No problem. That's, that's all.
Yeah, you have some funny MFers in your audience, man.
Good. Hell yeah. They, that's why they actually watch these boring ass live streams. They have fun with the, while I'm actually streaming at these meetings. They have fun in the chat with each other, entertaining each other, because my stream is shit.
Oh, this lady covered her face too. Look at this. She's like, no, God, the camera now.
That's, I think that's a man.
What?
But these people, I, I don't know how it identifies. Never mind. Look, it's got a beard.
Hmm.
You were brought evidence for over a year. You didn't do anything till it went public on the internet. So she's asking, do you live here? And she walked away with charges, by the way.
Who?
That bitch that was asking me, do you even live here? She walked away with criminal charges this night.
Which one? The one on the far right or the one in the middle?
The one, uh, dead center in the screen right now in the, uh, blue jeans. She walked away with criminal charges.
Yeah, she's jealous because her man's, uh, you know, I flirting with you.
Yeah, and she couldn't keep her hands to herself. I don't know if she was trying to grab my camera or my dick, but she was grabbing.
Oh, really? Okay. So it's gonna get spicy. Alright.
Oh, it gets real spicy. This is the boring part.
Okay.
Uh, I mean, sorry, second by Dustin, uh, motion by Gail, second by Dustin, we'll call Gail for Richard against Dennis, I mean, uh, Dustin or Ernie. I have a request. Okay. Two, one, agenda.
Okay.
No.
Yes, it is. Got to pause here.
Yep.
Here's what they did with the vote. Uh, the two on the right want the people to be able to have, to, uh, have their part in the meetings. The two on the left are with Peter, right? So they have a majority with the two council members and the mayor. But their lawyer previously told them when they had a council member vacancy, that because of the vacancy and the council being so small, if there's a vacancy or if anybody recuses in any of the votes, then the rest of the votes has to be unanimous. So Ernie recused, Richard voted no. Because Richard didn't vote yes, because there wasn't an unanimous yes vote after Ernie recused. The action doesn't pass. So they can't even, according to their own rules, get the agenda passed to even continue on with a meeting. But of course, fucking supreme leader Peter doesn't give a fuck. He's gonna do whatever he wants and he's gonna try, and we knew exactly what would happen. We knew that he would continue with the meeting, whether it was legal or not.
Okay, so the motion was to pass the agenda. They used the strategy to hang the vote so it couldn't pass. And he's gonna force it anyway. Okay.
That's right. No, it's not. That's not the way it works. Yes, it is. No, it's not. That's not the way it works.
I just said, yeah, that is.
This is King Peter, man.
Yeah.
Whatever the fuck I feel like doing, whenever I feel like doing it, from the very beginning, man. We wanted to put it on the agenda to get rid of Reyes because he's got an LEA 90 complaint. This guy adamantly on the recording that I've got three, four times in a row, you cannot be a cop if you have an LEA 90. Two weeks later, changes his fucking mind completely.
Look at this pose. I, I saw, this is perfect. I was just thinking, uh, see, see how he's holding his arms? Here's what I thought. The Persian king from 300. He's like, I am a god.
Oh shit.
Alright, sorry.
Have to, when he recused, you have to have an anonymous vote. After he recused, you have to have a unanimous vote. Yes, you do. You gotta have unanimous vote. This meeting's over. Unless you want to, unless you want to put his items on the agenda and, and work with your council members, it's over.
Was this planned, what you just said? Kind of what's going on? Was this pre-planned?
By me, yes. There are some people who had bits and pieces of the plan. Um, we didn't want to get, uh, council members in trouble, so they did not know all of our plan. Um, but, so the council members didn't know that we're about to shut this meeting the fuck down. It's not approved, Peter. It's not approved. That's not the way the rules work. That's not the way it works. Yeah, I do know. It's not approved, Peter. Hey, Peter, this, this meeting is not gonna continue. This meeting isn't gonna continue, Peter. You're gonna start listening to the people, Peter. You're gonna start listening to the people and not just the lefties. All of them. Listen to the people, Peter.
Wow. This is an insurrection.
Listen to the people. What's that? I, I can't hear you. I really can't hear you. Do you want the microphone?
You should've gotten some like, uh, blue face paint and put it on your hand and just did the, the Braveheart thing and be like, freedom!
I love the old lady in the back of their cane. The meeting's not approved. Your council. He's calling the cops now.
Pointy Jones, you ought to be damn well ashamed of yourself. Mr. Kaiser, at one point members of your family were on this governing body and they named a dump after them. You guys got a proud heritage representing this team. Let our representatives bring things to the table. Let them represent their constituents, Peter. Roll your eyes, you little socialist pig.
Tommy over there cheering.
You have to be ashamed more than most.
Peter, let's just put items on the agenda to talk about. Let's have some order here.
Well, go ahead and then we'll start it again. Go ahead.
Let's just put some items on the agenda. Let's talk about it.
You talked about executive session and you're, you guys finally lay their own name right from left.
There's a lady outside yelling and screaming. And then there's this piece of fucking trash. She's a school counselor. She works under Peter. She said you're all gonna be dead.
Everybody will die eventually.
What?
She's the one who threatened to kill somebody.
Yep. She's done that before to an elected official.
So the councilman is over there.
What were you saying?
Councilman is over there saying, I can't hear, I can't hear, I, I can't hear. They're trying to continue the meeting even with all the noise.
All right. This is crazy. What's your chat saying during all this? Are you able to read it?
Uh.
No, I mean, like, when you were there, you know what I mean?
Right. Um, I was gonna go to the livestream. Um, I don't know, actually. Yeah, I would, would, so some of these people are actually batshit crazy. The lefties, surprise, surprise, right? Um, so I keep my eyes on the people around me more than the chat.
So you think they'll like, attack you?
They did. Not just me, they attacked multiple people. We ended up with multiple criminal charges on this night. Against Peter's Peter eaters.
Speak up. Speak up. You're fine, man. Speak. Speak.
It's crazy to me, like, what a duh, like, okay, let, let's like pretend Patrick is statist. Let's pretend Patrick believes in the system. Let's pretend that Patrick is a corrupt, dumpy looking mayor, okay? Let's just pretend all of that. If I'm not a fucking moron, I would let people put things on the agenda to keep this from happening and to keep from undermining people's, I don't know, view that I have rightful, just authority. But every time you like shut the people up in a government that they believe is representative of them, it's not, but, and this is proof that it's not. But, you know, let's just pretend, you know, like in the normal person's mind that thinks that's the case, you're undermining that. You're undermining people's faith that the government is representative of them. And, uh, and that's how to, that's how to get run out of town pretty quick, I guess is what we're about to see.
Yep.
There you go.
Yeah.
There you go.
Wait, were they stomping because the other guys were trying to talk or something and they wanted to shut them up to? Yeah, oh, okay, okay. They wanted to be dicks too. Okay, okay.
Yeah.
That'll teach them.
Peter, let's just put the items on the agenda and move on, man. Why? Oh, cause we actually do need like seventy-two hours to amend it or maybe we should do that. I mean, we just wanna be able to put items on the agenda. Come on. Yeah, and we can discuss it. You people.
That you want things put on the agenda, but yet you act like this.
I already tried that.
About eight months, actually.
Also, she's under the false impression that the people being governed owe any level of fucking respect to these pieces of shit to have the government do things for them. If they work for the people, then the people can treat them like shit and they still have to do their job. Sorry, got a little ranty there.
You tried to do it through the correct avenues.
We don't have to suck. We don't have to kiss your feet to get you to do your job, lady.
You nasty old bitch.
Peter, Peter, what do you say we redo the agenda?
I like how you keep trying to bring it back to, hey, man, let's just, let's just do the right thing. Hey, don't forget, there's this right thing that you could just, you know, do, you know, hey, man.
Since day one, for eight fucking months, Patrick, I've been reasonable with this guy. I've tried to call him and talk to him personally and say, here are the actual problems. Let's just fix them. That's it, dude.
Yeah.
Refuse it.
Hey, man, you know, it's not too late just to do the right thing. Hey, man. You're gonna need to buy a new table if she keeps banging.
That's my boy Tony Smalltown Audit Forty-Eight. He's the one, the guy standing there with a camera phone is the one who started sending me this stuff and.
Okay, all right.
Did all the open records requests to get all the, the dirty cop videos.
Yeah, if the council keeps not doing what the people want them to do according to the rules, then you guys just form your own council. Bring your own tables and take over the, the county.
I had told them that maybe we should bring a really big speaker and play the declaration, the preamble to the Declaration of Independence. When a government becomes destructive to these ends, it is the right and the responsibility of the people to overthrow such government.
You're what?
And institute new statism. Because it'll work this time, I swear.
You should do that, but make it the Declaration of Individual Independence.
There you go.
You, the point of your job.
Don't make her hit that table again. She'll do it.
Money in the public and then you make decisions. You don't go to executive session right up at eight. Top your whole agenda, I can vote. You don't want Dustin or you or Peter or Ernie or Richard. You know, this is supposed to be an open forum for the, for processing public business. We are all public. Do you hear people? Our public business. People live, people that live in Mountain, and she calls this town shit to her problems in the past. If anybody remembers no grant money, that was called mess of a pointy Jones. She's got a long record here that people forget over time.
Is that the sound man on the far, on the left side of the tables, our left?
Yes.
He's just like, he's just like, oh, shit. I better handle these levels.
She was running reflection. She was trying to catch up on the shit. You didn't file. And you were a lot of the reason why Mountain Air lost its grant funding.
Hey, you know, James. I have, I have a guillotine. I, I just wanted to say, just, I wanna put that out there. I actually have one, so, you know.
Are you gonna bring it?
Do you want me to?
I mean, if you're coming out here, you should definitely bring the guillotine.
That's all I need. I'm already on seventeen list. Did you see the FBI's announcement lately?
Uh, and caps?
Yeah.
About and caps, yeah. Rewind about five seconds for ten. He calls the council bitch a bitch.
Well, it takes one to know one, bitch. You walk around here all high and pious. You walk around here like you're God.
Look, she goes to get up and the other councilman holds her back. She was gonna come back and fucking go to files, man.
Awesome.
The other councilman's talking her down. He's like, look, she's way bigger than you. She'll knock you the fuck out, Dale.
And, and she's got a broom. Did you see what she did to that table? A broom, I mean, uh.
Dale, do you wanna be sodomized? Don't do it, Dale.
Hey, how's it going, everybody?
Hey, how are you?
Good. Good to see you.
I heard the bullshit in there. I said, I'm going.
Did you? Were you watching live or what? On the fake news network?
Yeah.
All right. Hey, hey, let's make sure, like the leftists, there, there are some people in there, some Peter eaters that wanna turn it violent. Please make sure that doesn't happen.
Okay.
But don't, don't let anything turn civil, civil disobedience. Thank you, man. I appreciate it as a personal favor.
So, uh, so I talked to the sheriff a week before this, Patrick.
Damn near just got up.
And I told him, I promise we won't do anything violent because, you know, it's good to have friends somewhere, right? And if they know you're not gonna BLM and burn the fucking city down and beat the shit out of people, you know, it's easier to get people's support that way. So I talked to the sheriff a week before and said, um, you know, we're working very hard to talk to anyone who's gonna be there with us, will not be turning violent. We're gonna be loud. We're gonna be obnoxious. People are gonna hate us, but we're not gonna BLM the city down.
Cool. All right. So should I fast forward or play it or what?
Yeah, let's skip to, uh, let's skip to, let me give you the timestamp, when the sheriff shows up. Um, they adjourned, or I'm sorry, not adjourned, they, let's see, it's gonna be an hour thirty-five minutes and forty seconds. They, um, recessed the meeting until the sheriff gets there, is what Peter said. Um, which is why I was like, I'm just gonna go outside. So at an hour thirty-five minutes and forty seconds, the sheriff deputy shows up, sergeant. And the sheriff already knew what we were gonna be doing.
Okay.
Just you? Right on. I don't know if I've met you yet. Were you?
Yeah, I talked to you at the, uh, the other day over there, like at that little third island.
Okay, yeah, yeah, after the last meeting. Right on, man.
You didn't offer him any donuts.
Yeah.
How's he supposed to work hungry? That's not nice.
I'll give him donuts after he comes back out.
Okay, then. Who'd they pray to?
Jesus.
Okay. Hey, at least it's nonviolent now. There's been some history in this town. You know that. I know you just blew me off, but, you know.
No, I do. You were, you, you say, oh, free speech, if everyone has the right to speak. Where were you when I tried to speak?
When?
Oh, my God.
No, I'm dead serious. Today. Yeah, I trolled you so good on that, but you spoke.
You lied.
You spoke. You were against the police, weren't you?
I had to listen to all this. I didn't get my two minutes of free speech.
She doesn't know what trolled means. You gotta speak the appropriate lingo for the generation.
So what I did to her, by the way, is at a council meeting, she stood up and talked shit about Shoemate, who's on, she talked about the fact that he's on paid administrative leave. He's cost the town like thirty thousand dollars while he's not been at work on leave. And the way I edited it, it made it look like she was on our side because she was complaining about the police. Just to fuck with her, just to piss her off. And I made her the thumbnail and it said that town is tired of corrupt police or something like that, and she was the thumbnail.
At that meeting?
And you supported them. You're not a trash in me. So don't give me your shit.
I don't, I don't even know what you're talking about.
Go back and look at this thing.
Okay. The raw footage? So you're mad that I showed that you were against the police? I actually had to film this, but I'm happy to talk to you after I'm done.
Yeah, right.
So the sheriff goes up and look at it. He gets ID out of fucking Peter. Fucking dumbass. Peter gives ID and he gets run for Warren.
He ran the mayor for Warren? That's hilarious.
Fuck, yeah, dude. Did you hear what he said?
No.
He said, the sheriff's not gonna do anything, so we'll try to continue the meeting. If they make too much, if, uh, people keep making noise, we'll, we'll see what we'll do and go from there. We'll probably adjourn.
You need your table?
So I go to give the old lady her table back. I scooted closer to her so I can reach her with her cane.
Yeah, you need a loudspeaker.
Yeah. He said, meeting adjourned. Hey, Jass gets his ID back.
He's trying to get you in trouble. It looks like he's, he's gesturing to you and trying to get the sheriff to do something.
Yeah, he says, you can't do anything about this. And the sheriff says, me? What, the noise? And then he tells him, no, that's, you might be able to hear what he says.
Thanks, man.
So it's over. Like, how does this devolve into a fight or where, how does assault happen? It's, it's like over now, right?
That is over. It's, it should've been over, but the left didn't get what they want. He told them, no, there's nothing I can do. This is a peaceful protest. They're, you know, and that's their first amendment right. It's called civil disobedience.
Good thing it's the left, you know, they're peaceful people.
Oh, you're good. I hope you got good audio, cause I didn't. I hope you got good audio because I didn't just.
Okay, go back five seconds. It ends up being this tiny little bitch right here, I believe is the one who attacked multiple people outside. Started throwing fists, punch a pregnant woman. Um, and then when, uh, somebody tried to pull her off, she was flailing her arms and cut somebody's arm up with her ring.
That little lady, okay.
Yeah, there's another tiny lady who tries to attack me and then attacks another guy. So the, and I'm not surprised, you know, they'll use their tiny little.
Sorry, go ahead. I, I don't know when to unmute, so.
This lady, this lady is getting up.
Okay.
Enjoy.
Hey, do you know her? Just, just.
You were trying to get him to, get ready to calm somebody down to prevent, uh, escalation. Isn't that what I just saw? Yeah, okay. Isn't it a shame that you have to nanny people to keep them from actually assaulting each other? Like, it's nuts, man.
Yeah, it's, the whole time, though, it was the Peter eaters that after this consistently got in people's faces and, and, uh, two of them were swinging.
Just speak, just speak.
She almost got a cane in the ass, too.
That's, uh, that's.
What'd you say?
She almost got a cane in the ass, too. That's it. Everybody's wanting that cane up their ass.
What'd you say? Never mind, maybe you shouldn't.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Sorry.
It's, maybe another thirty seconds, I'm gonna go approach Peter and start yelling at him. Maybe fast forward a little bit till you see me yelling at Peter, till Peter's in the, uh, frame. There we go.
You think we'll redo this meeting in a week or so, Peter? Maybe put the items on the agenda that you talked about. Let me ask you about one thing. You said in the previous meeting that if an officer has an LEA ninety complaint against them, that they cannot be an officer in Mount Air Police Department. Now that Juan Reyes has an LEA ninety complaint against him, are you going to remove him?
Do you need any help with anything?
Or did you lie? And is that not really a policy? Did you lie again, Peter? No, it's my job, it's my job.
It's my job.
Yeah, I do.
Perfect.
I don't live in Mount Air, but I live in the county and I come here all the time. Wait, wait, but listen to this. What did you? It doesn't matter. You guys just voted to take my money before this meeting. You welfare whores sat here and voted on what public money you wanted to use from the.
Welfare whore has been called. PC Audit, thanks for the ten, appreciate you. Lemon character jumping in excitement with his heart beating. Oh, that was the emoji.
Public, government and the state, a welfare whore.
Did she just throw hands? Did she just throw hands? Oh, let's get rid of the rainbow.
Government and the state, a welfare whore.
I was hoping if somebody did it, it was gonna be a grown man, because I had my mace in my pocket. Not only did I not feel comfortable defending myself against this woman, I wouldn't even mace her, dude. Like, she's like five foot four, I could literally pick this woman up and throw her halfway across the room. I was like, I'm just gonna back up, I'm not doing anything to her.
Yeah, it's the patriarchy. It's all that male privilege where you're having to be assaulted and not be able to respond. That's, that's good stuff.
Shit out of here, you're disgusting.
Typical Peter eater turning violent.
Did she just call, like, call, was that a redhead insult?
Yes, it was.
People like devolve back to a state like they were in in high school when they're in conflict situations, yeah.
So you see the guy standing over there with the phone by the door, right?
Yes, I do, yep.
That's Small Town Audit forty-eight. I don't know if you'll be able to hear the audio, so I'm gonna give it to you before we go. She walks up to him and says, I don't know who you're with. Peter is walking by as this happened, and Peter says, oh, he's with them. And then she does what she does to him.
One of the things you can say is, uh, I'm not gonna date you when they're trying to hit you and you can't hit them back. He's like, I'm not gonna date you, I don't wanna fuck you, leave me alone. Very good.
Stop begging to suck my dick.
You sat here and voted on money that you would use from around the country.
It is for the kids.
It doesn't matter. I paid into it.
Does everything for these children.
I paid.
DJ Hands.
And, and here, let me put this little tiny little bit in there. He does everything for the children. Do you know what the, uh, where the, uh, most of the stock in child trafficking comes from? Eighty percent of children who are trafficked. Uh, no, from, uh, the Child Protective Services System, from foster.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Eighty percent of trafficked children in the, in the US come from foster care. Uh, Peter has six foster kids at the house. We'll get into that later. In another video, at another time. Uh, Dennis Fulfer, the town manager, uh, the city clerk, sorry, the town clerk. Um, he, when he was in his late twenties, early thirties, got married for the first time to a fourteen-year-old girl. With permission of her drug addict mother, with the permission of her drug addict mother. So when I said, this shit goes deeper than I wanted it to ever go, I'm, I don't have any evidence that there's anything wrong actually going on. But I do know where eighty percent of the stock comes from.
Holy shit.
And I do know that the town clerk married a fourteen-year-old girl.
The DJ?
The DJ.
Okay, okay.
Yep.
So, so his DJ name is DJ Pedo, that's what you call him from now on. DJ Pedo.
Well, it was legal, I guess. He got the permission of her drug addict mother, so that made it legal.
Oh, man.
Does everything for these children.
I paid into it. Does everything for these children. I don't care what he's doing, what.
Are you sure that that's true? Cause they, he can like sue you if, if, uh, it's not true, I think, right? Like, that's defamation.
So, there's no allegations that he's doing anything. There's only an al, there, we only know that he does have foster children.
Yeah.
Uh, six of them. And, and, uh, um, Dennis's marriage was legal. Uh, in New Mexico, at the age of fourteen, you can marry, you can get married with the consent of your parents. So it was totally legal. So there's no allegation, what's that?
How old was he at the time?
I, I, I don't know if he was in his late twenties or early thirties. So there is no allegation here, by the way, thanks for mentioning that, that there is anything illegal going on.
Yeah.
Um, just highly suspicious, that's all. And anyways. So there are people who are trying to reach out to some of the, um, now grown adults that have grown up in the home. Um, but some of them are either, never mind. I'll, I'll tell you the rest of that later.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't wanna make any like false allegations, so, yeah.
Sure. Yep, there's nothing illegal. Uh, we have no evidence of anything illegal going on, only things that I personally find suspicious. And suspicious is neither a misdemeanor nor a felony.
The stolen money.
Hey!
No, I'm sorry, I was like trying to figure out DJ Pedo.
Grabs his phone.
I'll pay attention now, oh!
And then tosses it back, grabs his phone, has an ear hand, tosses it back. And then walks away.
She got his phone out of his hand.
Yep, and he's gonna, he's, he just had perjury on that hand.
That is assault, assault and battery, actually, right?
And she has, and there are charges on her.
Yeah.
She, I think she was charged with, I don't know if it was just battery, assault and battery, but, uh, yeah, the sheriff's department did put charges on her.
Wow, that, I mean, that's not usual, right? Like, usually when there's like little minor phone grabbing instance, there's not actual charges, so.
And the reason that, um, so Tony asked me, because you know how I don't like government and, um, and, you know, we need to handle our own issues. So he asked me about it, because he thought I'd tell him, no, don't, don't do anything. Um, but me and Tony understand the right to self-defense, right? And if these people continue to be violent, they're going to escalate, we believe they're gonna escalate it further. And it's gonna get really fucking ugly. And so the reason for putting criminal charges on her for this petty crime was to show all of them, dude, you guys need to fucking stop, because the police, um, they're not the ones actually you need to be afraid of here. You can't just go around putting your fucking hands on people. You're gonna get hurt really bad.
And what is this, like, I'm trying to figure out, what are they upset about? Like, all you were trying to do was discuss the, the cop that was on permanent leave? They, they're, they're this upset because they didn't want that to be discussed?
It's not even that, though, and, and that's the wonderful thing that you and I keep doing is coming back to the actual topic at hand. That we're trying to get something done. To, for these people, though, that's not even, that's not even it. It's that for whatever reason, Peter doesn't want these things to be done, and they are just with Peter, period, end of story, no matter what. Um, it does, it makes, it makes zero logical sense, Patrick. I mean, especially since most of these guys are leftists, and so they, you know, this is right up their alley to be against police brutality and crooked cops. But, I mean, it's all backwards, man.
Come on, get, get froggy again, you stupid bitch. Who shouldn't be here? You fucking welfare whore, using money from around the country to pay for your shit here. You fucking commie welfare whore. Get a job, bitch, get a job.
Patrick, I'm sick of fucking commies.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, hundred percent understand that one.
Here, I got it, I got it. She just put her hands on my. No, 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 go.
Oh, this was the short lady.
Here, I got it, I got it. No, 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 go, go, let's go, let's leave, let's leave, let's leave. What the fuck, she put her hands on my fucking wife! I know, I know, let's leave, let's leave, they want us to.
So the, the one dude, I pushed him away because he's the type to defend his family, and rightfully so. After his pregnant daughter got punched, I think he had every right to lay that bitch the fuck out.
Sure, yeah.
And that's why I tried to stop him. It's, anyways.
Yeah, because like even if he had a later out, they would have come down on him for it. Yeah.
Yep.
Turn violent.
It's more, more of that male privilege, though, yeah.
No, 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 no. Here's my daughter, she's pregnant, you bitch!
Fucking horse-looking bitch!
She's putting hands on my daughter, what the fuck? We have to leave, we have to leave. We have to leave, dude. Ma'am, ma'am.
So he just detained the short one? They were trying to leave? Is that what happened?
Yeah.
He told somebody to stand by his car and not leave, I think.
Yep. Yep, she's the one who was, uh, swinging on people.
She put hands on my pregnant granddaughter.
And she did it right in front of the cop, he witnessed.
Yeah, yeah. See, the thing about government is it just brings us all together and it helps us work together to solve our problems.
Obviously.
Excuse me?
Who hit who?
Uh, Jared.
Oh, look, she drew blood. That old lady drew blood on me. What, this old, this old bitch over here? That one, that old lady attacked. This one? This one?
That's assault.
Typical fucking Peter eater, goddamn commies, violent pieces of shit. Fucking commie.
Spitting facts over here.
Pieces of shit, always turning violent. You always gotta turn this into some kind of Antifa shit. What are you gonna do now? Burn down the town? You fucking BLM commies. You fucking BLM commies. Peter, get the fuck out of here, bitch. No, Peter.
Don't you tell him bad names like that, that's not nice. No, really, you think I don't know that? Oh, you are so stupid if you think that's what it is. What's your, what's your name?
You should know my name.
What is it?
I know yours, you're running your mouth all over town.
Running your mouth all over town, lady, your husband was first in line, oh, sorry.
Oh, no, Peter's not her husband, Peter is gay. Like, for real, Peters.
I was just, I was just making a random nonsense insult.
Oh, okay. So that's another thing about Peter, though, is that he, he clearly tries to follow like the leftist agenda. At least on paper, like hashtag BLM, but supports police brutality. Um, allegedly, he's openly gay. But at this point, I wonder if he's even gay, or if that was just the cool thing to do to get voted in as a Democrat, because he was actually running for state senate recently. And, uh, he got pushed out by the governor and they, they, uh, replaced him with a guy named Augustine. I can't remember Augustine's last name. But, yeah, so I think, I don't know if he's really gay or if he's just playing gay, because it, it's the cool thing to do.
I don't know, but that sky is beautiful, man. Y'all have some nice country up there.
I'll try putting my wiener in him and find out.
Oh, Jesus. It's not assault if he likes it.
Only by consent.
Okay.
Probably.
I never said you couldn't have a opinion. Your opinion is nobody shop local, because I lost the election.
No, you're an idiot, you're an idiot.
This is why it would be a good TLC drama show, a reality show. Like, the people in this town, their, their beefs go back so far, and they'll bring up twenty-year-old family feuds and stuff and, you know, and make a good TLC reality show.
Right on.
Bring some, uh, private money.
If that kiss can go straight to here, got him! If this were in Texas, they would have said, bless your heart, and walked away.
PC Audit says Peter's not gay, he's just unsuccessful with women.
We had quite a few cameras going, so. These, these fucking Peter eaters always turn violent. Always turn violent. They can't keep their hands themselves, they get what they want, or they burn shit down and attack people. Typical fucking commies. Typical fucking filth of the, of the earth.
So I need a police report.
Look at what this commie bitch did.
Oh, shit, I'm gonna die, I need a police report.
Was it that same lady, that lady?
Is it this one?
That one, that one that grabbed you out here.
Which one grabbed you?
The one that Peter.
Oh, was, oh, the one, yeah, I got that.
Yeah, I was trying to break up a fight, keep the peace, but we don't have a peace. Police man around here!
Sorry, ma'am.
And I'm getting attacked!
So that's about it, man. We walk around, there's some yelling, a little bit. Um, I asked Peter at some point, like right before he's leaving, um, I said, so, do you ask these people to be violent for you, or do you just naturally attract violent people to you? He didn't want to answer.
Choking.
So the next meeting is the fifteenth. Um, he says he's gonna hold it on Zoom, so that nobody can come in and, uh, publicly do anything. Um, as far as I know, the council members will probably still do the same thing. So if he does continue the meeting after the vote, it's an illegal meeting anyways. Um, but also, if he decides that he wants to hold it on Zoom, then we'll be going to his house to protest. So anybody who wants to be here, uh, we don't, and, you know, again, no violence, no, no commie shit. uh, we don't, and, you know, again, no violence, no, no commie shit. Uh, we'll be going to be loud and obnoxious, and, um, throw a temper tantrum is really what a protest is to me. Does that sound about right?
Oh, yeah, it's like, you know, begging massa or something, yeah.
Yep. I'd beg, my, my one-and-a-half-year-old protests all the time. You know, she'll throw herself on the floor and, "Yeah, I wanna go outside!" So we're gonna do that at Peter's. Hopefully, we'll just do it at the public meeting, but we'll see how Peter wants to do this shit. Look how fucking gross he is, dude. Oh, here it is where I, this is actually where I'd- The kind of people you attract.
You guys caught that, uh, kid.
Peter, why did your supporters turn violent and attack people tonight? Did you tell them to do that, or is that just, or is that just kind of the, the kind of people you attract?
You call the county cops because of noise.
Why did your-
When you see an assault, the county cops are right there, and you stay quiet.
Well, then go talk to them!
I don't call the cops like you, bud. Yeah, okay.
Fucking piece of shit.
Yep, that's, that's the way. You heard me, guys. You guys heard that.
She gets fired up there, by the way, Patrick.
Hey, she, she like-
I mean, government does that to people. When government has the power to control your neighbors, then your neighbors have to fight over government, otherwise they get controlled. Like, that is the fundamental problem with government, is that it allows everyone to point guns at the people that they live near to make them behave how they want. And as soon as you give the government power to do that, then you have to fight over those guns and where they're pointed, because if you don't, your neighbors will point them at you.
Absolutely. Um, and I wanna point out, too, that I went and started poking and prodding at this sheriff's department two and a half years ago, and they immediately decided that they did not wanna be put on blast as a shitty department. Um, and so at least publicly, at least in front of the camera, they will no longer violate people's rights. I guarantee you, four years ago, they would've drug us out of that meeting physically, whether it was police, the sheriff's department, guarantee it. Um, and that's why I think it's still a good idea to consistently target the police, and by target, I mean, try to make them understand that we will sue you, or, you know, do whatever, um, to stop you, because they're the ones who do the violent attacks, right? Peter and his little, um, Peter eaters weren't going to physically remove us from the meeting. They were gonna ask someone else to do it for them.
Yeah, sure.
And, you know, like Lark and Roses said, you know, "I'm not scared of one, uh, tyrant with a mustache or whatever, one crazy, one loony guy with a mustache. I'm scared of the hundreds of thousands and even millions of people who will obey their orders and do their bidding for them."
Yeah.
And that's what the police are. They are the muscle behind the tyranny. Soon as you convince them, "Hey, you shouldn't do that for them," now we get a tiny bit of liberty.
Uh, I think you got a little lucky with the sheriff that day. I, I could definitely have seen it go in the other direction.
Yeah, well, I let them know what we were doing, too, because you know calls like this will go into the police department fabricated. You know, "Oh, my God, these people are, uh, they brought torches and Molotov cocktails and, right?" And they've all got AR-15s, and they're pointing them at us. And so, that's why I told them beforehand exactly what we intended to precisely, instead of just make sure all your deputies know. So.
Is this worth watching? Let's see.
Badgered by everybody. I mean, I hate it. You had almost nobody with you, probably nobody at all, right?
And so you were at the county commission meetings, it was like sitting in somebody's living room, having a conversation. It's exactly what it was.
Yeah.
And, boy, they ramped up real quick.
Okay.
She's a statist, Patrick, but I love her.
I have to go find the resolutions.
And it's good having someone who understands all of the spells.
If I ever need the shit beat out of a table, I am calling her.
I, I quite like her.
All right, well, that was crazy, man. That was crazy. I don't, wow. And he can't back down either, right? Like, without losing face in front of all of his people, he can't now say, "Okay, we'll put it on the agenda." Like, he can't.
I don't know, because, uh, is that really the way it is? Is that because, I don't know, I've never, I've never really had that mentality, you know? Because we're all wrong sometimes, every last fucking one of us. So I just, I don't quite get that. You know? I don't know, man.
I mean, if he does back down on it, then the next meeting, you can be like, "Hey, next time he gets something wrong, maybe you guys don't assault people."
I mean, I would certainly commend him for getting it right.
So, so two people got charges. I, I assume the, the little woman and the first woman?
Both, yeah, both of the little women.
Both little women.
They're both itty-bitty. Yeah, so the, the woman outside that swung at the pregnant lady, and then the woman inside that grabbed, uh, Tony's phone. And-
Did you, you should, you should try and, you should try and get the phone call where the mayor calls the cops. Can you get the recording of that call? See what he said?
Absolutely fucking lutely I can. Yes.
Oh, I can't wait. I can't wait. We gotta do a follow-up one of these.
For, for a lot of people, the drama is really fun, but again, bringing back to the point, like, all this was ever about and is still about was some dirty pigs acting like dirty pigs, and mayor doesn't wanna get rid of them. That's it.
Sixth Estate, Arizona, donated two dollars. Thank you, sir. He says, "You guys are awesome unpatriots, de-patriots." You consider yourself an unpatriot? What, what do you consider yourself?
James.
Same. Same, yeah. I'm, I'm not patriotic, man. Uh, yeah, to be patriotic, you kinda have to buy into the, the collective, and I'm very much not a collectivist, so.
I think that's why he said unpatriot, though.
Yeah, that's true, that's true. Unpatriots.
But I just, I just like to go with the label James. You know, that's the one I like to stick to.
Yeah, I'm not governor, so maybe not patriot. That's it. Maybe that's the sauce. Cool, man. Well, I mean, I guess we can end the show here. It's been a blast going through this with you. I look forward to seeing what comes next. Uh, if any, if any of you guys have any questions, get them in that last call. Um, so the, the plan is to do a protest at his house in, in like a week?
Well, the plan is just to go to a meeting on the fifteenth and have the proper items on the agenda to be discussed with order and decorum. Uh, the way that honestly, even as someone who's not a statist, it doesn't matter what kind of meeting I'm going to. I go to a business meeting where we're gonna conduct business. I would like there to be some order, instead of everybody just yelling and screaming and, like, "Hey, let's take turns." Um, so hopefully, that's what we'll have. Now, I have given Peter the benefit of the doubt for eight months, and not one time has he done the right thing. So we don't expect him to do it this time, in which case, he would have the meeting on Zoom, and we'll go yell and scream and throw a temper tantrum in front of his house. Yep.
All right, cool. Well, we'll leave it there. Thanks, everybody, for watching. Go ahead, but-
Everybody, come on out. Fifteenth, Mount Air, New Mexico.
Can they, where can they reach out to, uh, get more information if they wanna show up?
Um, realjamesfreeman@gmail.com.
Okay.
Um, but yeah, it's the fifteenth, six PM, at the, just look up the Mount Air Town Hall, just Google it, you'll find the location, or the Mount Air Police Department, it's the same building. And, uh, you'll find the location there. Just show up, six PM.
I, I want, I want more information. Next time we do one of these shows, uh, going over, cause I hope we get an update, like, in the future, next time something happens, I hope we can do another one of these and, and talk through it like this. It was a blast. Uh, and I, and I definitely demand an update on DJ Pedo, so, um-
Well, it's legal, though, just to be clear.
Well, just because it's legal, legal doesn't mean it's not pedophile, right?
Legal pedophilia. Well, also, um, no, that's another really, really hot topic that's even difficult for libertarians and anarchists to discuss, right, is age of consent and, and things like that, right? I mean, that's one of those things that even a lot of libertarians and anarchists are really gonna have some differing opinions and ideas on. Um, but one thing for sure, though, is there is a difference between pedophilia and an attraction to teenagers. Pedophilia is prepubescent, just so you know. And then, uh, um, that, that's just the definition of, of the word, I believe, so. Still sick, in my personal opinion.
That's the one topic I don't, that is the one topic I don't really discuss publicly, because people get so butthurt when they take it, they, they take, they purposely take what you say the wrong way and then get super butthurt over it, so I just don't do that. Yep.
Even libertarians and anarchists, right?
Yeah, oh, certainly, yeah. Because, you know, like, i- if the government can't be the final one to declare what age is appropriate, then who is? And necessarily, you're gonna have disagreement on the ages and blah, 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 so.
So I'll just, we'll just stop right there. My bad.
Sounds, sounds good, sounds good. All right, guys, thanks for watching. Thanks for hanging out. Uh, we'll see you next time. Take it easy. Thanks, James. I had a blast.
Thanks, Patrick.